Welcome to the first ever Zoom virtual BOS meeting. I had a little trouble getting on this morning. Let's, we're gonna now start as we usually do with the pledge of allegiance, if everybody could stand. The pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America and to the republic for which it stands as one nation under God indivisible, liberty, justice, for all. Okay, a little off key there, but that's okay.
Guess we didn't have to sing it.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, item number two, approval of the minutes from the Board of Selectmen's meeting on March 19th, 2020. Is there a motion to accept?
Before we accept, I have a motion to amend the minutes.
Okay.
The attendance reflects that selectwoman Raven was present via conference call and I was physically present. I wasn't on a conference call, so if we can just amend it to say present.
Okay. I.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, and for a vote, I, Fred Camillo, vote yay.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes, as amended.
Thank you. Now, okay, so we are going to, for the people listening, we're going to identify who we are when we vote. So people have a clear understanding of how we voted on each item. Going next up, number three on the agenda is a selectman's updates for selectmen. So basically, it's been, this is the time where we reflect on what we've done in the previous two weeks in the community. This is really COVID-19 dominated. We've been having daily meetings, 15 in the public safety complex with all the department heads, the Board of Selectmen members, the state delegation, and Congressman Jim Himes. It's for informational purposes so that we're all on the same page and that we're not duplicating and wasting time going over what was heard early in the morning by me. Every afternoon at four o'clock, I do a daily press conference. Twice a week, I am joined by Greenwich Hospital. I am in daily contact with our neighboring first selectmen and mayors throughout Connecticut and also with Mayor Philanca in Portchester. I have instructed Dan Rossoa, our emergency operations director, to reach out each day to the nursing homes and the fire marshal to reach out to our assisted living facilities. They give us reports every single day, which we pass on. Speaking, as I said, we speak, I speak daily with Jim Himes. We may be collaborating on a reverse 911 call to reach all of our citizens, especially those who don't speak English. As you know, we've closed most of the public buildings. The ones that remain open are doing business via appointment only. I think that's pretty much standard now throughout the state. All the parks, fields, and playgrounds have been closed. However, we have kept the trails open. We want people to get out and exercise, but to only do so at a distance. We are going, meeting every day to assess and reassess policies so that when we get to the other side of this curve, that we can reopen not only government, to get back to the way it was, but also our daily activities. As we've seen in other locales around the world, when things started to flatten out and they relaxed their restrictions, they paid a price for it. So we want to make sure that we don't repeat that mistake. But still, we want to make sure that we are preparing for getting on the other side of this. I did meet with the, via telephone, all of the private clubs in town. We had closed the Grif several weeks ago and I explained to them that they can stay open as per Governor Lamont's executive order, but it's something that was not done with, obviously, can't be, couldn't be sanctioned by our office because we've asked our public course to close. Apparently, a couple of courses were already considering doing it, but immediately, right after that telephone call, they reached out and all but one has closed. I don't know if the last one has eventually done that. I know the air, the public courses that were open in our vicinity, in our region, Stanford being, having two of them open, have now closed also. So we're all, we're all trying to stay in sync, you know, Mayor Martin, Mayor Rilling, First Selectwoman Cupchuk, First Selectman Marple, myself, Mayor Philanca. This virus doesn't know any boundaries. So if one town is, has, all these restrictions are physically distancing, but the next one isn't, it's gonna come over. So we're trying our best to stay, staying coordinated and consistent with each other. Yesterday, I issued an order for all employees of our grocery stores and establishments that handle food to be wearing masks. We thought it may have been covered in one of the governor's executive orders. It doesn't look like it was. So we will be going around and checking on it daily. I certainly will myself, just like we're doing with the parks. Hats off to Parks and Rec Department for putting out monitors each day and our, of course, our police department. I know when I walk around town and go through parks to see what's going on, the few times I've had to break up games, people have been great. They've been terrific and they certainly get it. So I believe most, the overwhelming majority of our town is taking this seriously and I think it's starting to show benefits, but we just can't take our eye off the ball at this point and our foot off the pedal. Couple of thank yous, Andrew Mao in the Chinese-American community donated about 7,000 masks that I personally delivered to the Muse, Hill House, Nathaniel Witherall and Parsonage Cottage. I also kept some here for town hall workers. Scott Dankie of Catterdon, L. Catterdon, gave a $75,000 donation, which we earmarked for the police department, the fire department, and Jams. Also, Scott France, Harry Aurora. A couple of other people that don't want to be mentioned have given, donated some things and certainly my colleagues on the board and the state delegation has been terrific in communicating each and every day and always volunteering to do tasks and share the burden. And so I can't thank them enough. So much more to come. We are constantly assessing and reassessing every policy that we put into place. We know what the trends are. We know what's happened in the past, not just with this virus, but in past pandemics. And we don't want that happening here. And I know it's gonna, it's frustrating a lot of people. Heck, it's frustrating me, but it's being done with all with the health and welfare and safety of our citizens. And I can't thank, again, can't thank everybody enough for pulling together as a great team. So with that, we'll go to the select persons updates and I'm looking right at Jill, so you go first, Jill.
Sorry, trying to unmute my, my audio. Thank you, Fred. So it certainly has been an unusual time. The last few weeks have been spent troubleshooting and responding to constituent concerns, gathering information and also serving as the Board of Selectmen liaison to the Greenwich United Way for purposes of an emergency donation that was approved by the BET to help fund their COVID response fund. They have put an application out online for not-for-profits that are in need of an emergency supplement or funds. And there, we will be starting the grant application review today. There's the first call, actually, so that a question had been raised earlier about whether any of that money has been dispersed as of yet, and it has not. But after today's call, I should have an update. I want to add my thanks. I want to add my thanks to First Selectman Camillo, who's been working around the clock to address some of the challenges that we face. And I know our town is better prepared as a result. And also, I'm sure the rest of the board joins me and I join them in thanking all of our town employees who have really stepped up during this time. The other boards and commissions, many of whom are listening in on this call. People are really working together to respond in a unified way, in a unified voice, and making sure bases are covered. I really appreciate the commitment that we've had from everyone in town to make this an easier transition. Thank you. Oh, one other thing, please feel free to reach out if you do have questions or concerns to one of the three of us and we will try to address it, your concerns as easily, as quickly and as easily as we can.
Thank you, Jill. Selectwoman Raven, I see you over there.
Thanks, Fred. Thanks, Jill. I certainly echo everyone's thoughts and gratitude on how well everyone's coming together to address the challenges. And Fred, especially you, yes, you have been working around the clock and we're happy to contribute. One of the things that Fred asked me to do was to attend the Western Connecticut Council of Governors' regular call. I did that and everyone should be proud to know that Greenwich is leading in many regards with some of the things that we're instituting, so like calling the private golf courses. A lot of the other towns are now following suit. And just from an optics perspective and making sure that people who have access to those types of facilities are sharing in the social distancing and burden for the people who don't have access to those types of facilities. Also trying to have a little bit of normalcy as we go about our board duties. We actually did nine interviews over a two-day period for people that are seeking appointment to various boards and commissions. So we tried to get that back on track, so we'll have some appointments to vote on later. And I'm working with Lori Contadino with respect to reaching out to seniors. And I saw Alexis and Tom on the phone, or on the, on the Zoom call. We're thinking about maybe seeing if the RTM can assist and just call maybe seniors, RTM members, seniors in your district, just as a check-in to make sure folks are doing okay. So those are some of the things that we're working on in addition to everything Fred mentioned. So thank you.
Thank you, Lauren, and thank you for sitting in today and as a designated at the WestCog meeting. And thank you, Jill, for bringing up the, the public-private partnership we entered into with the United Way. We gave the first $100,000 for that. They had pledged to raise 500,000. I believe they're almost there now. And also, we received some good news from Congressman Himes a few days ago that we will be receiving almost $500,000 in additional CD EG funds that can reimburse that and also go to help these nonprofits who are hurting and who have some, a lot of COVID-19-related expenses. So that money will be well-received here. And again, thank you for, for both of you for stepping up and certainly leading the way on this. Going now to old business, we have the proposed charter and code change regarding the Riversville Road parking pattern. Deputy Chief Marino, are you on?
I am, sir.
Good morning.
How are you? Good morning.
Good morning to you.
All right, so I, I thought because this has been on the agenda for some time now that I'd kind of recap.
Chief Marino, if I could just interrupt you for a second, Jenny, this is not, this is not the item. This is for our new business. Apologies.
Yes, good catch. There we go.
So I'll continue. I thought what I'd do is just kind of recap some of, you know, the backstory behind this, this proposal. So back in January, DPW and Parking Service collaborated to basically come up with a plan to refine the parking plan on Lower Riversville Road. DPW Engineering put together a plan, which at that time, we were all in agreement with. So we got it scheduled to be on the Board of Selectmen agenda for February 12th. Prior to that, on February 7th, we hand-delivered and mailed notices, Board of Selectmen meeting notices and park, and the parking plan to area residents and business owners. At the original presentation to the Board of Selectmen on February 12th, there were a number of citizens who were in attendance who brought up some concerns regarding the loss of parking and the impact it may have on the, that particular area. Subsequent to that meeting, I communicated with a number of those residents that, and business owners that raised concerns. And based on, on those concerns, Parking Services and DPW went back and looked at the plan again and subsequently revised the plan to the point that we feel it will meet the needs of the town while still maintaining adequate on-street parking in that area. I shared that plan with many of the people that had ra, raised concerns. And at that point, everyone seemed satisfied that, you know, the parking in that area would not be negatively affected based on the revised plan. We also invited everyone to attend an informational meeting that we held in DPW on March 12th. We did have one person attend that meeting. We also gave people the option of calling in if they liked to. And the person that did attend, once he saw the revised plan, was satisfied that we had heard the concerns and the new plan would not negatively impact parking on that area. His concerns were met. So just to kind of recap what the ordinance change is. So there will be no parking on the east side of Glen, of Riversville Road, from Glenville Road all the way the entire length to Bedford Road. This will mean eliminating approximately three parking spaces that are on the very corner of Glenville Road and Riversville Road that are designated as 15-minute parking. First, current standards for traffic engineering, those spaces are too close to the corner and the crosswalk and, you know, it's highly recommended that they be removed. We'll also be shifting approximately five parking spaces from the east side of the street to the west side. So although we'll be losing a few parking spaces on the east side, we're increasing the level of parking on the west side of the street. And that really pretty much entails what we're looking to do at this point.
Thank you, Mark. Just to recap, so the three parking spaces on the western, eastern side of the town, of the road will disappear and you'll be adding five or six on the western side.
I don't have an exact count, but I would say it's relatively equal to, or if not a little bit more than what we're moving or eliminating on the east side of the road.
Okay, so at least we will, at a minimum, make it up on the other side of the road or possibly have a pickup of a few spaces on the western side.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And I assume everybody, both resident and merchants, are okay with this. I don't know if Lauren or Jill have any questions for you on this?
I just have one question that it didn't occur to me the couple of times we saw this material is the cost to re-sign and re-stripe the area. Is that something that's within this fiscal year's budget or do we need to wait on that? And maybe that's not a question you could answer.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the answer to that question. I believe Gabriella is monitoring the call. I don't know if she could give you a ballpark figure on that.
Okay, Jill, follow-up questions?
No, no further question. The assurance that, can you, can you hear me?
No.
No further questions? Yeah, no further questions, just the assurance that the residents and the, and the commercial businesses have all signed off on the plan that there are no other outstanding concerns, which I believe Deputy Chief Marino stated earlier, but just a confirmation.
Yes, everyone that I, everyone that I've spoken to, based on the revised plan, has had no, no objections. And again, it does also correct the line-of-sight issue for the residents on, at parcel number 11, which is, was a safety concern that we were looking to address.
We do have one question from the audience, Gina Ferraro, Ferrano, sorry. So Gina, we're gonna allow you to talk and if you can please announce yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Gina.
Yes.
Hi, Gina. Good morning. How are you, Fred and Jill and Lauren and Chief Marino? Thank you for having this meeting. I am one of the business owners on Riversville Road at 12 Riversville Road. And I, I didn't know of all the other meetings prior, but that's okay. But my question is, the spots that you are implementing on the west side, do you know where they're going to be? Are they going to be in front of my store, which is at 12 Riversville Road and the hardware store in that area? Or are they gonna be more towards the Veterans Parking Lot?
So Gina, you, you currently have parking in front of your store and the only restriction there is the no parking 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. Is that correct?
That is correct. The only thing is, there's only one sign that states that and it's right before, or sorry, should say, right after the Veterans Building. So it looks like it's before that sign. After that, we don't know, I don't recall there being any signs there. And there's, there's really no striping for actual parking. And some people don't know that that is parking and people kind of like pull up on the curb. And it's kind of scary because there's been times when people go out of our store and there's a car pulling in and pulling up on this, on the sidewalk.
Okay, okay. So one of the benefits of, you know, passing this, this charter change and its ordinance change and getting this project started will be the installation of new signage. So we'll certainly take that into consideration and make sure it's clear. But the parking in front of your establishment, that 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. restriction is not going to change. There'll be no further restriction there. So you will have parking in front of your store. And to answer the second part of your question, the additional parking on your side of the street will be along the parking lot of the Veterans Club. That's correct.
Okay, so that's more of the northern side. But you, you will put some type of a signage at the 12 Riversville Road area to indicate that there, that is legal parking, because many people just don't know you can park there.
Well, there's, there'll certainly be a sign restricting the parking from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m.
Okay, good.
After that, there's, there's no further restriction until you get a little bit further south towards the intersection where there's currently no parking because it's just too close to the intersection.
Very good. Okay, thank you so much. That was the clarification that I needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Gina.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Okay, is there a motion to accept the proposed charter and code change regarding the Riversville Road parking pattern?
I'm motion to accept the proposed charter change for the Riversville Road traffic pattern.
I second that motion.
Okay, discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Fred Camillo votes yay.
Lauren Raven, yay.
Jill Oberlander, yay.
Okay, so that is a three to nothing vote. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Deputy Chief Marino and Gina for calling in.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Now going out to new business. First, on the, on the docket there is a request for MI status for the Glenville Road Corridor Traffic Organization and Intersection Improvements. Deputy, DPW works, Deputy Commissioner Tim Michaels on and I believe Gabriella is coming on, and this is what we saw earlier before. Gabriella with us?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for allowing the Engineering Division of the Department of Public Works to request municipal improvement approval for this project during the first virtual Board of Selectmen meeting.
Thank you for joining us.
So my name is Gabriella Sarkosta-Kohi and I am a senior civil engineer with the Engineering Division of the Department of Public Works and project manager for this project. I'm presenting today to request municipal improvement approval by the Board of Selectmen for the Glenville Road Corridor Traffic Signal Optimization and Intersection Improvements. This is the first step that would allow us to move forward with the planning and zoning approval process. Before I begin, I just want to mention that this presentation is available to view on the Board of Selectmen webpage following the agenda packet for this meeting. Next page, please. Funding for this project is provided under the CMAC Grant Program, which stands for the Congestion Migration and Air Quality Program. This program provides 100% federal funds to the town, reimbursable up to $2 million. These funds are administered by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. The goal of the CMAC program is to reduce congestion and improve air quality by reducing emissions to help meet the requirements of the Clean Air Act through transportation projects and programs at the local government level. Here's a timeline of how we arrived to this point. In facing the need for improvements through the corridor of interest, the Engineering Division submitted a grant application through WestCog in March of 2015 requesting the $2 million for this project. Included in this application was a resolution of intent by the First Selectmen to provide a local match to complete the project. In a little bit, I'll go into the reasoning included in the application. February 2016, the grant was awarded to the ground of the town of Greenwich in the amount of $2 million. In spring of 2017, a design consultant RFQ interview and selection process was finalized with the design consultants being Malone and McBroom. Up to 2018, we were in a little bit of a standstill because of the municipal master agreement, which needed to be signed in order to accept the grants and start the project. There was a whole process because of the hold harmless clause in the agreement that required a charter change and additional insurance for all projects that have grant funding. So in January 2019, an authorization letter was issued by the state of Connecticut to proceed with the preliminary design. And then most recently, in 2020, January, a letter was received to proceed with the final design. Next slide, please. So the Glenville Road Corridor, as accepted by the Connecticut DOT, includes the roadway on Glenville Street and Glenville Road from the intersection of Glenridge Road through the intersection of Weaver Street, including all intersections within the corridor, roadways leading into it with a setback of approximately 100 feet. Glenville Road and Glenville Street is an urban minor arterial roadway. It has approximately 18,000 vehicles per day. It's 1,500 linear feet long and has a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour. Next slide, please. The Glenville Corridor experiences heavy congestion, especially during the morning peak due due to commuter traffic using it as a connection from the Merritt Parkway, Hutch Parkway via King Street to Central Greenwich, and also the 684 via Riversville Road. Additionally, school traffic generates morning peak hour traffic due to two private schools being in the vicinity and one public elementary school located on Riversville Road. The location of a major unsignalized intersection at Pemberwick Road, which is located in the middle of signalized intersections, creates further congestion, specifically in the morning peak. As any vehicle attempting to turn left from Pemberwick Road onto Glenville Road or onto Pemberwick Road from Glenville Road causes a backup. Other issues include roadway geometry and sightline issues. There's a lack of pedestrian accommodation and sidewalk gaps, parking issues, and access management to local businesses. Next slide, please. So the primary goal of this project is to optimize the existing signals through coordination and improve vehicle detection at each intersection, so the signals respond to the traffic demands. Another goal of this project is to make geometric improvements and add a traffic signal to the Glenville-Pemberwick Road intersection to alleviate queuing associated with that intersection. These improvements would create better traffic flow by reducing vehicle delay and improve the level of service along the corridor. This in turn will decrease idling times and at red lights and ultimately minimize congestion along the corridor. Another goal would be to improve pedestrian safety. Located in the vicinity of an elementary school, Western Greenwich Civic Center, and many businesses, pedestrian safety and overall safety of the traveling public is our ultimate goal. Next slide, please. So in March of 2019, a walk audit was completed with major stakeholders, which included property owners and business owners along the corridor. And following that audit, a project information meeting was held. During that time, we collected input from the public and listened to their concerns to find out where they felt the problem areas were. So we stood this way, we knew where to focus improvements and create priority lists. There was a great turnout for this meeting, and we collected a lot of useful info and recommendations. This allowed us to proceed with an analysis. During this time, accident history and traffic counts were collected. We took into consideration proposed development in the vicinity. Traffic models were generated based on the collected information, and the models were calibrated so that a future projection of the traffic could be created to model existing conditions and any future improvements proposed. In May of 2019, we held a second public information meeting. At this time, three concepts were presented in a Shreds-type meeting, where we collected feedback from the public to be sure that we addressed the problem areas and get a feel for what concept was preferred by the majority. In September of 2019, a preferred corridor concept was proposed and presented, followed by a two-week comment period. This preferred concept included the least right-of-way impacts with models showing that it will significantly improve the traffic operations and safety along the entire corridor. At many of these meetings, there was a lot of input and comments from the public regarding issues separate from this project, which we were hoping to address sooner rather than later. And some of those comments we received were regarding parking, which we've been working with parking services to correct and signs and lines to correct as well. Next line, please. So how do we know it's going to work? Based on the calibrated models, we looked at the future conditions 2029, which isn't too far away. We looked at the conditions without improvements based on the model and conditions with the improvements of the, based on the preferred corridor concept. Looking at the level of service for each intersection. So basically, a level of service is a grade given to a particular intersection based on the amount of time it takes to wait in order to make your maneuver through that intersection. So for example, a level of service of A is a wait of less than 10 seconds, where a level of service of F is a wait of greater than 80 seconds. We kind of consider these like grades like you would get in school, A through F, except whereas in school, C is passing. In the traffic world, C is considered standard and consistent with what you see in other intersections throughout other municipalities. Next slide, please. So looking at the future conditions with no improvements, if we, if we were to project traffic through the area of this corridor, the level of service goes from AM peak being the worst-case scenario of level service of F at Glen Ridge Road, a C at Angeles Drive, an F at Riversville Road, an F at Pemberwick Road, and an E at Weaver Street. If we look at, next slide, please. Proposed improvements with the preferred quarter concept. Looking, based on the traffic models, the level of service improves to a level of C at Glen Ridge Road, Riversville Road, Pemberwick Road, and a level of service of B at Weaver Street. So at each of these intersections, the level of service improves by three grades. In order to receive the grant funding, the level of service has to be improved to at least a C or better. Next slide, please. So this is a visual of the preferred quarter concept that was chosen and accepted by the Connecticut DOT. After the referred quarter concept was decided, the consultant Malone and McBroom proceeded with a preliminary design. And since the design started, we were actually able to minimize the right-of-way impact areas. So the bright green areas that you see in this, in this plan right here shows where impact would have taken place. It's actually been reduced by quite a bit since, since we started the preliminary design process. So I'm going to go through each intersection to show you exactly what improvements are proposed. Next slide, please. So at Glenville Street and the Shopping Center driveway, Stop &amp; Shop Glen Ridge Road, we're proposing to widen the Glenville Street segment from the Shopping Center driveway to Angeles Drive. So you can see on the south side right there, where you see the bright green, we're proposing to move in the curb line approximately 10 to 12 inches to widen the roadway a little bit, so that we can allow an additional lane to provide that right-hand turn into the Stop &amp; Shop parking area. Currently, cars waiting to make that turn are using up the parking spaces and taking up that space in order to make that right-hand turn. So allowing to have that additional lane in there will maintain the parking and provide a safe turn for, for the, for the public. We're also proposing to provide new sidewalks along the southern edge of Glenville Street, realign the crosswalks, and reconfigure the ramps for ADA compliance, install new traffic's equipment, and relocate the parking in front of the cleaners further south away from the intersection and away from the crosswalk. New granite curbing and drainage structures are also proposed. Next slide, please. At Glenville Street, Glenville Road and Riversville Road, we're proposing to extend the eastbound left-turn lane for Riversville Road to allow for a left turn into Angeles Drive and a longer queue length. We're proposing to extend the raised island on Riversville Road to better control access in and out of the gas station. In our preliminary design, there were some, some changes proposed. Since then, we met with the owner of the gas station and modified our preliminary plan to include at-grade curb, so that would allow for larger vehicles and delivery trucks to access the gas station. We're proposing to tighten the northeast corner radius to slow down vehicles negotiating that right turn from Glenville Road to Riversville Road. So if you see that bright red at the corner there, that would be a mountable curb to allow larger trucks and school buses to maneuver around, but making sure that the typical vehicles will stay on, on the roadway. We're proposing to install new traffic signal equipment. At that corner right there, the bank has an exit driveway. We're going to be signaling this driveway, so it's a stop, it's a controlled exit and does not interfere with the traffic. We're proposing to reconstruct and better define the existing parking spaces along both sides of the east leg of Glenville Road in front of the firehouse and pharmacy. We're proposing new granite curbing and drainage structures as well. Next slide, please. At Glenville Road and Pemberwick Road, I just want to emphasize that this is the intersection that will show the most changes with a, a new traffic signal here. We're proposing to widen Pemberwick Road to provide a dedicated left and right turn lane, widening the eastern leg of Glenville Road to provide a dedicated westbound left turn lane and a through lane. We're proposing to provide sidewalks and new crosswalks to improve pedestrian access to the intersection. And the proposed geometric improvements would result in a relocation of parking area in front of Glenville Pizza to across the street. But with the traffic signal and crosswalks there, it would be so much more safer for the public to access the business across the street. The new granite curbing and drainage structures are proposed here as well. Next slide, please. At Glenville Road and Weaver Street, we're proposing to widen the, the western leg of Glenville Road to provide a dedicated right turn lane and an eastbound through lane. We're planning to widen Weaver Street to provide dedicated left and right turn lanes, provide sidewalks and new crosswalks at the intersection, new traffic signal equipment so that they can all be in sync with each other, and new granite curbing and drainage structures. Next slide, please. So the next steps here, where we are right now is Malone and McBroom was issued a notice to proceed for the final design in March. Currently, the CIP budget is being reviewed for fiscal year 2021, where there is a $5 million request in this budget for this project, with 1.7 of that being reimbursable. The remaining up to the $2 million is, is already spent on the preliminary and final design process. So right now, we are requesting MI approval from the Board of Selectmen so that we can go ahead and request IM, MI approval from the Planning and Zoning Agency to then request final site plan approval from Planning and Zoning. If this all goes well, we're planning to complete the final design in the summer of 2020, with permitting taking place in the fall of 2020, so that we can bid in winter 2020 with construction starting in the spring of 2021. Next slide, please. If there are any comments or questions, I'd be happy to answer them. For the public, this presentation is posted on the Selectmen's webpage, and there's also a project webpage if there's any information needed. Or feel free to contact me, this is my phone number and email address. And hereby requesting municipal improvement from approval from the Board of Selectmen, thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I, thank you, I thought I muted myself. Thank you Gabriella for a thorough presentation, and thank you to the department. Any questions, Jill, Lauren?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. I just want to first confirm that this is our first read. My understanding is for all MIs, we'll have it twice on our agenda, the first time for a first read to get the presentation, and then subsequently for a vote. Is that your, that's correct Fred?
Yes, that's my understanding of it.
So I had, I did have a couple of questions in looking at the material. First is just a point of clarification, it might just be that I have, that in the package, we had an older set. We didn't have all of the screens that, Gabriella, thank you for that great presentation that you had up. On the documents that we were given, Preliminary Quarter Concept 1, which I believe is your preferred option, the Weaver-Glenville Road signal had an AM, traffic flow at a D, and not the, I think you, I think you said it was a B or a C later on. So I was wondering whether that's just, that was an update or a clarification or a typo?
It is, it is planned to be a B based on the models. It's, it's an update since we've proceeded with a preliminary design.
Great. And in addition, I was wondering whether you could talk about the decision to not do a traffic circle at Pemberwick and Glenville Road? I know that that was one of the options that you looked at for Concept 3. There are a lot of traffic lights in this area, and I'm just wondering why you opted for the light and not the circle? As my second question, then I have a third.
Agreed. So we did during the public information meeting, look at the traffic circle. Based on the cost-benefit analysis, the level of service would have been lower. It would have been a level of service of D. And then there would have been a lot of right-of-way involved with property taking in order to complete that traffic circle. So the cost-benefit was not, it was not worth it.
So on the materials that, that we had been given, the level of service looks to be exactly the same. Now C and A versus C and B, not a D.
I know that when we did look at it as a whole, when you connect the traffic signals with the circle, the level of service was, was worse, and the right-of-way impact, it was not, it was not acceptable.
Right. Do you have an order of magnitude of the cost increase for the traffic circle versus the light?
We did a preliminary cost estimate, our consultants provided that information. I can forward that to you.
That would, that would be great, thank you.
Sure.
Two other questions. One is, this is an area, particularly the Glenville Street, Glenville Road to Riversville that is often traveled by bicycles, cyclists. And I was, I'm surprised that in this whole CMAC-approved planning that there wasn't, there doesn't seem to be at least any extended shoulder or striping or marking for cyclists. And I was wondering whether that was something that wasn't considered or was dismissed because of cost? If you could talk a little bit about?
Sure.
And whether, whether that is something that you're open to revisiting?
So we did review bicycle lanes. My understanding, and Jim Michael can intercede if I'm misrepresenting this, but my understanding with bicycle lanes is that in order to have a bicycle lane, you have to have a minimum of five feet available. And to have a bicycle lane, you have to have them on both sides, eastbound and westbound. The additional 10 feet would require property takings and the cost benefit. I mean, there was just, through this area, there's just not enough room for that.
Yeah, Jim, I don't know whether you want to comment on that additionally for additional shoulder, particularly in the stretch between Glenville Street and Riversville Road. in the stretch between Glenville Street and Riversville Road.
Okay.
And the goal is to increase pedestrian and bicycle alternative transportation options. It would be great if every time we look at a realignment, we account for that.
I believe the new, we did look at this, and like Gabriella mentioned, there was some concerns with the impacts to the right of way with the locations of those buildings, the locations, a lot of those buildings are pretty much right up against the road. In addition, there's some impacts that go into public properties. There's the park parcel, which requires special, there's a special state statute that deals with park parcels. If you take property from a park parcel, that gets a little tricky. So we have to be fairly careful with putting roadways where there is the park parcel there. The other thing that we
We lost Jim.
Am I still here?
Yes, now you are. Now you're back.
So they, so I think you, did you hear me about the park parcels? Yes?
I did.
All right. So the other thing that we will look into as we further this design is kind of like you mentioned, Jill. Can we pick up a couple of feet on the each shoulder and put a line stripe there that will help with that? I don't, you know, we're not going to get, like Gabriella mentioned, she hit it right on the nose. The doing bike lanes would require an additional 10 feet because we got to put them on both sides of the street and they got to be five feet. We don't really want to do that impact, but I think we can pick up some of the some of the differences, you know.
So perhaps we can have a separate meeting so we can, I can look at, maybe you can walk me through the specific alignments of that section. I would just like to understand it before I vote on it, given my interest in preserving access for bicycles and pedestrians.
Yeah, we could, we can look into that and kind of walk you through the plan a little bit tighter.
That would be great. And my last question is something that we hear really regularly, which is whether there are alternatives for the granite curbs. Whether you consider, there are a number of places where you talked about installing granite curbs, and I know that's been the position of the Department of Public Works. However, we consistently hear from residents that wonder whether, how necessary those are. So I don't know whether there was a conversation about that. Whether that's part of the MI, specifically the granite curbs, or whether that's something that's still up for discussion.
So I'll take that one, and I guess my comment would be on granite curbing. That the town, our policy has been that when we're putting curbing in, that we prefer the granite curbing because of the long-term ability for wear and tear on the curbing and also for the maintenance. When we started, when we start looking at with, you know, with our northeast winters, which we didn't have a whole lot of this year, luckily for us, but we oftentimes, the salts really eat up on concrete. And so, and the asphalt with the plows and so forth, they do get torn up a fair amount. So we found that the granite curb, even though the initial cost may be a little bit more than what, when we start looking at the lifespan of the curbing, that that really does is very beneficial to the town. It's definitely something we can consider. It's something we actually have to work with the state and the federal, you know, because this is federal funding for this grant program, that we do have to get a little bit of special approval to utilize the grant, utilize the granite curb because that's not necessarily a nationwide standard.
Thank you.
There is it. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jill.
I had one other question as well, which I, or two, I guess. But Fred, was that on granite curbs? Did you want to?
Yes.
And I'd like to speak too.
Just real quick question, and I'm sorry to interrupt. Jim, isn't there a benefit, a safety benefit to having granite curbs?
Having curbs in general keeps people kind of in the travel lane and gives them a good idea of where to, you know, keeps people from driving up onto the sidewalks or parking on the sidewalks. It kind of keeps people channelized. And that's the main safety benefit, I think, for the granite curbing, for any kind of curbing. I think the granite does tend to last better and, you know, having the wear and tear is the biggest thing.
Thank you.
My last question, or I keep saying that, and then I keep thinking of another ones. Along Weaver Street, I believe there's some parking or people park along Weaver Street when they're using the fields at Western Greenwich Civic Center. Does the, does your plan eliminate that parking? Or continue that parking? And similarly, are there any eminent domain issues related to the change of alignment along the Western Greenwich Civic Center on either side?
Yes. So at the southern edge of Glenville Road adjacent to the ball fields, the property line will be adjusted to accommodate the new alignment. We are not touching the parking on Weaver Street. We are widening the intersection just a bit so that we can accommodate the right and left turn lanes approaching Glenville Street from Weaver Street.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Jill, one thing I would like to add on that. I do not believe that that is technically legal parking, whether or not people are parking there or not. If I recall from the last time I was out there, which was a couple of months ago, I thought I saw no parking sign posted in that general vicinity because I parked to take a couple of pictures of these intersections. But we can work with parking services on that because it does become kind of one of those things where people need a place to park for the ball fields, but we also want them to be safe with the roadways.
Thank you. No further questions.
So I have a couple of questions. I'm really excited about this. So I actually live on Glenville Street, although my house isn't depicted in any of the the schematics or the drawings. Is there also, and it might be more of a parking services question. So on the corner of Glen Ridge and Glenville Street, it's actually people coming out of the shopping center. Religiously, anybody that's making a left turn onto Glenville Street assumes that they have the right of way and are cutting off people that are entering straight to go into the shopping center or people that are making a right from Glenville Street to Glenville Street. So if there's anything that can be done to improve that, and it might be signage, because that is private property. And then on Glenville Street, heading towards the shopping center, if you're going to make a left hand or if you're going to make two lanes, I think that's one of the options. We might need to consider like line of sight similar to what we were doing on Riversville Road. The on-street parking that's on the right-hand side of the street going towards the shopping center.
Yes. So we are looking at the proposed conditions and considering the signage and the timing of the signals so that they can be all in sync with each other. So you don't have that, you know, last person waiting to turn and then blocking all the traffic when the green light is released.
Great. Thank you. It's very exciting that this is happening. Fred, you're on mute.
I keep doing that. Sorry. Thank you, Gabriella and Jim. We appreciate that. With no further questions, this was our first read at this. So again, if we have any other follow-up questions, we'll reach out to you. But again, thank you for a thorough presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have the cell tower lease agreement between the Town of Greenwich and Verizon. Assistant Town Attorney Amina Ahmed is here, and I think Joseph Liano is also on board with this, around the call.
Good morning, Mr. First Selectman. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning, Amina.
Morning. Good morning, Mr. First Selectman and Board of Selectmen. This is Amina Ahmad, Assistant Town Attorney, and I think Joe may also be on the line. So we're both going to present this lease to you and answer any questions you may have. So this lease has quite a long history. In the memo that I had presented to the board, the original lease with Verizon goes back to March of 1993. And the location of the cell tower, as you all know, is at the Griff's Golf Course. Verizon actually entered into this lease in 1993 and constructed the cell tower, did quite a bit of work at that property to get the cell tower up and running and located its equipment at position number two on the cell tower. The Town of Greenwich actually has its own 911 system on the same tower, and that's on the top position. So that lease, which went back to 1990.
Okay. Looks like we lost Amina.
She's back.
Yes, yes.
All right, I'm back. So the lease expired in March of 2018. At that time, we went to the RTM with a new lease. And we went through several of the RTM committees at that time, and basically, the feedback we got was the rent amount didn't appear to be a fair market value rent. And the RTM committees at the time suggested that we hire a consultant who would specialize in doing a fair market analysis for cell tower leases. And then after that analysis was done, to go back to the RTM and some of its committees to see where we were. So the town went out to an RFP, hired a cell tower consultant by the name of Wireless Edge. And that consultant prepared an appraisal report which was evaluated by several people here in Town Hall, including the Town Administrator and Joseph Liano and his office, my office. We evaluated the appraisal in order to determine what the fair market rent would be for this lease. So it's taken a bit of time, as you can tell, to get to where we are. And that's why I'm giving you some of that background. And working with us on this lease were a couple of members from the RTM who I would like to mention. And thank as well, because they've been with us throughout the process, providing feedback on the lease terms, on the rental terms, on the various issues that have come up over the past year. So we've worked with Mike Basham, Peter Van Dyne, Jude Collins, Adam Rothman, all members of the RTM who had expressed an interest in helping us out in getting to where we are now. So the document that you see before you as the Board of Selectmen is a lease that has taken some time to get to. But we've had input not only from town departments and the Town Administrator, but also with a small group of very involved RTM members who helped us out through the way. Essentially, what this would do is, again, Verizon would remain at its current spot at level number two on the tower. The lease would be for an initial term of five years, and Verizon would have the option to renew the lease for two additional five-year terms. You will see also that the commencement date of this lease goes back to March 1 of 2018. This goes back to what I said before. We were trying to get it renewed in March 1 of 2018, but it's taken a while to get to where we are today. So the commencement date is retroactive to March 1 of 2018. And the rent for the March 1, 2018 going forward is $78,792 per year. And then, beginning March 1 of 2020, that rent would be $83,595. So it's a bit of an oddity because we are already now a few years into that commencement term. Verizon has also agreed to pay us the back rent, which will be a considerable amount. That's going to be $159,950. So we will get back all the rent that would have been owed to us had this been approved back in 2018. And we're not only getting back that rent, but we are getting back rent at a significantly increased amount as a result of the work that our consultant did to put together an appraisal and a fair market rent. So this is really a win-win for the town. And there's also a built-in escalator of 3% for the rent. And Verizon will be responsible for all its maintenance and everything else that it's been doing. That doesn't change. I do also want to point out that given our relation with, relationship with Verizon going back to 1993, Verizon will continue to provide the Town of Greenwich backup generator and equipment for our 911 system. So that again is a very important piece of this lease. And they have agreed to continue that relationship with the town for our 911 system. There were some other questions raised by one of the selectmen after having reviewed the lease. I know one of those questions had to do with, where does the rental amount go? So as you all know, there's a revolving fund for the golf course. So any rents collected from this lease will go into that revolving fund. I do also want to point out, there is another lease at the cell tower, and that is a lease with AT&amp;T. That lease goes back to 2006. We are working on doing a new lease with them on pretty much the same terms as we have now with Verizon. It's just that they're taking a little bit longer than Verizon did to review the lease and get back to us. So there will be the Verizon lease, and then hopefully in a very near future, a lease with AT&amp;T on position number three. And then the Town of Greenwich's 911 system is position number one on the cell tower. I know Joe, when he speaks, will talk about that revolving fund and what the monies there are used for. There was another question about any rental payments from Verizon prior to this lease. So their original lease was a dollar-per-year lease, which was pretty standard for leases back then. But the reason it was a dollar-per-year also for Verizon is they built the tower. They put the money into building the tower, doing all kinds of improvements. And if you look at that old lease, they also provided additional equipment to the town. So it was a sort of a package that was put together back then. And the advantage to Verizon was that they only paid a dollar a year for that lease. As you can see now, that amount has gone up significantly. But we're now dealing with fair market rents. And so that's where we are. I'm happy to answer any other questions the board may have. And also let Joe give you additional information in terms of where his department is in terms of this lease.
Thank you, Amina. We appreciate the detailed report. A quick question, the eight, the Um, a quick question, the eight, the the money from the lease with AT&amp;T, would that also go into the golf course revolving fund?
Yes, and and that's where it's been going. Uh, they they have actually been paying us rent. But their rent, if we are able to negotiate the same deal with them as we've done with Verizon, will will go up significantly. But to answer your question, uh Mr. First Selectmen, yes.
Thank you for that answer. I guess it's a good segue to Joe unless Lauren or Jill have a question.
I can listen. Joe, do you want to show your video?
No, that's okay. Um, I'll just go on the audio. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We hear you, Joe.
Okay, so um, just to kind of dovetail in what Amina said. The golf course went into revolving fund system in the year two thousand, two thousand and one. And that was both the golf course revolving fund was approved by both the BET and the full RTM. There's still a resolution in the resolutions of the RTM document that uh certifies that. And at the time of that we looked at putting the golf course in the revolving fund. Um, the only thing that didn't get addressed is there were eight million dollars worth of that unfunded capital improvements that needed to be done at the golf course. And we identified those at the time, but there was really not a plan to um, to fund those and how those would get funded. So it was kind of, we're going into revolving fund, but we'll deal with how we're going to fund some of those um capital projects. So in two thousand and six, when AT&amp;T came on the pole in the third position, they started to pay rent. And that rent went into the revolving fund for the golf course. And of course, help with the offset of some of those capital projects uh which we uh executed. Uh, which we've executed to to date. This way, the the um capital projects, cost of the capital projects are not only shared by the money that we funnel in by the rent from the cell tower. But also by the greens fees that um we charge to the golfers uh and their membership. It would help prevent escalating the greens fees beyond what golfers might want to pay to play at a municipal court. Of course, and also the the membership which would uh to join the Griff, it would make it kind of prohibitive. So the purpose of of doing this, the way it's been done and um and approved, is that the uh the rent would be put in the golf course revolving fund. And as the golf course identified projects and executed those projects. Um, it would be shared costs between the cell tower rent and also the golfers who are using the course. Uh, and so that's how the the capital projects would be funded. Now, to date, we have done um three million dollars worth of capital projects. We've we were paid one hundred percent uh up on those three, on those capital projects. Uh, we do not have any outstanding charges uh. Uh, and then we still have a a possible five million dollars worth of open projects that uh we can, we we can uh move forward. Um, on as as we need to. So this annual revenue that goes in there will definitely assist in moving some of those projects forward. That are still pending from the original two thousand and one list of projects uh that we identified at eight million dollars. That's how it works. That's how it's been working. Um, and the first time we were able to funnel revenue from the cell tower into this program was in two thousand and six, when AT&amp;T came on board. That's the history. Um, and that's how um we've been uh proceeding. Um, and um, this this has been, you know, identified with both the B, the former BET and the art and the RTM. As we started to uh proceed with the revolving fund. And also how we were going to fund uh some of the items that we had identified from the original concept. That's, that's what I have.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Uh, questions?
Um, this, I just have a statement or I guess a question for Joe. And um, wouldn't the folks that maintain the golf course have to also? Year-round, anything that needs to be accessed of um at the towers?
Um, Lauren, yes, we have full, I mean, we have full access to the tower all the time. But um, the partners that we have between Verizon and AT&amp;T now have been very good and very conscious about. You know, the the like the planting, the screening around the the outside of the compound and taking care of things that we need to. We identify whether it's a fencing issue or something like that. So um, to date, we've had hundred percent cooperation on our requests. And um, there's has been no open issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, I just a question on process. So thank you, Amina and Joe, for responding so fully to um the questions raised. Um, so this is just the board of selectmen approves the lease, then it then it goes on to the RTM for approval. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, uh, so, and I'm just a- as you were asking that question. Joe and I were also having a offline discussion. Uh, so to answer your question, yes, the Board of Selectmen would have to approve the lease in order for it to go before the RTM. Um, I was just checking to see the status of the municipal improvement approval. Which we received for this uh new lease back in two thousand and eighteen from planning and zoning. Um, so before I, before you vote today. Uh, I'm going to s- suggest that um we have a chance to check back with. Uh, Katie DeLoca and Planning and Zoning. To see if they would consider that MI approval from two thousand and eighteen to be valid. Uh, at this time, uh because as I had mentioned, it's this, it's the same lease. Or at least the same entity, same property, and they had approved it at MI in two thousand and eighteen. So I do want to be sure I touch base with them uh before I ask you to uh vote on this. So perhaps we can come back to you at your next meeting with a clear answer to that. And so that your vote would would be enough to go before the RTM. I I didn't want to forget to tell you that because that might be a key piece of the puzzle here. If planning and zoning and Katie DeRoca think uh, you know, that that MI simply needs to be renewed, we can definitely do that.
One other question, um, without, I'm trying to leap through and find uh their rent provision. Um, I would, I would leave to the the BET, I guess, the determination of whether with the change in value. The rental stream, whether they wanted to change where it's allocated. Is there anything in the lease that would uh prevent? Uh, it, if there were a decision made. On the rent allocation, is there anything in the lease that prevents that?
Uh, meaning.
Meaning that rental stream would go to the general fund versus the Griff revolving fund?
Uh, there is nothing in the lease uh that specifies where the rental stream would go.
Great, thank you. So I have no further questions. I thank you both for your um answers to my questions last minute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to acknowledge Jill, and you smiled with the dollar lease. I think you and I were both on the finance committee when you looked at all the leases and we saw this for the first time in two thousand and thirteen. Just a little history.
Yep, yep.
Well, thank, thank you, uh, Amina and Joe. And we'll circle back uh to next meeting on this uh pending uh the consultation with Katie DeLuca. Uh, next up is the resolution to delay tax payments and the imposition of late payment penalties. Uh, do we have, is Heather Smirgleo?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Morning, yes.
There we go. Good morning, Heather. Good morning, Board of Selectmen. Thank you for uh having me at the meet. Um, this is Heather Smirgleo, I'm the tax collector for the town. Um, due to the COVID nineteen, as we all know, uh Governor Lamott. Has issued uh executive order number seven S, which is the suspension and modification of tax collection and collect and collection efforts. Um, along with that, the state has established two different programs, which the town can take advantage of. One is the deferment program and the other is the low interest rate program. Um, the town must offer at least one plan. They could wa- actually offer both of them. But at the very least, they have to offer one to the um, to the taxpayers. Uh, the election form that's um, needs to be uh filled out and sent back to Office of Policy and Management. Is due no later than April twenty-fifth. So that would be uh Saturday, April twenty-fifth. Um, I just wanted to highlight a few of the items for each pop uh for each program. Um, and then uh, take any questions. Um, it's, it's fairly soon in the um. The offering of the two programs, so the Office of uh Policy and Management has actually. Taken questions from the Tax Collectors Association. And they'll be coming out early next week with a Q and A, which will uh probably take care of a lot of the questions out there. But for the time being, the highlights for the deferment program. This one simply means that the uh, the deadline is deferred for ninety days. So taking for an example, our sewer assessments for the North Myannis area that just went out March twenty-seventh. Those are lo- normally due on April one and become late after May first. So on those, the the new date would be July first. So it just pushes out the date ninety days, does nothing about the interest, just gives them a longer time to pay. Uh, this program, they would actually have to apply for. There's an application that the OPM has um come up with. And they would fill out the application and return it back to the tax collector's office and we would make the approval or we would decline that. Um, there's also wordage in the program that says that it can be extended to all taxpayers. But that would be with the approval of uh the town meeting or Board of Selectmen. The other program, which is the low-rate interest program, does not involve any applications. So this would be out there for everyone to take advantage of. The due dates would remain the same, so for the sewers, it would be April one with the last date being paid May one. And then July one payments would still remain at a late date of the last due date of. August third. So the the due dates would remain the same. However, if they went past the due date. Instead of paying one and a half percent, which is our normal interest rate, it would drop down to point twenty-five per month. And that would be only within a ninety-day timeframe. So it wouldn't be for any longer time than ninety days, that ninety-day grace period. Um, and there would be no application um involved with that one. And also, they would pay a quarter percent a month only for the three months, but only if they're making payments. So if they didn't make any payments, it wouldn't extend out any further than those ninety days. Uh, neither program applies to escrowed accounts. They don't qualify. So they would be on their normal payment schedule of July one with the, you know, drop dead date of August third. And normal interest rates would apply if they went past those dates. Um, and just the last item is that we have to notify the OPM by four twenty-five. Um, and that's it so far. It's kind of a work in progress day by day.
Thank you very much, Heather, for that explanation. Um, so we have uh, we have the next meeting to to go over this. Uh, that would give us a few days leeway to the April twenty-fifth deadline that OPM has. Uh, Lauren, Jill, uh, do you have any questions for Heather?
Very thorough, thank you.
No question for Heather. Um, but my understanding is this is a, this is a item that's approved by the RTM.
Um, not that I know of yet.
I do think we have uh some BET and RTM members on this conference call if they would like to ask any questions now.
Just kindly raise your hand and then we can recognize you. So Tom Byrne um has raised his hand.
Okay, so we'll go, go to Tom Byrne right now. Um, Tom.
Just identify yourself, Tom.
Can you hear me? This is Tom Byrne.
We hear you.
All right, well, just following up on Jill Oberlander's comment, uh, we established clearly this morning that this is an RTM decision. This is not a Board of Selectmen decision.
Is that your comment, your question?
It's a statement of fact.
Statement of fact. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from you?
Well, maybe you could clarify your statement that you're going to take this up next, next meeting. To do what?
Wait, we're waiting to, well, there's a, you said made a statement here and Heather had a different one, so. Uh, let's see, uh, is uh, if the town attorney who is on this has a, an answer for that. If not, we'll circle back and get the answer. Uh, Vin, are you, is Vin Marino on this?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Vin.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you, pal?
I'm okay, yes. So uh, unfortunately, the way these executive orders are written, they create uh confusion. Particularly in a town like Greenwich, because Greenwich has an RTM, not a town meeting. Uh, but, and the RTM is the legislative authority for uh these purposes. So uh, so it would be an RTM decision. I believe they have a meeting prior to the twenty-fifth where this could be uh discussed. Uh, but I understand why there is confusion be- based on the way the executive order is drafted. Uh, but uh, I I would suggest though, uh, and I know Tom's on the line. Because there are financial, potential financial impacts that whether it be the Board of Selectmen and the BET. But that there be comments uh from the bodies uh sent over to the RTM, so they can consider those comments when they make their decision.
Okay, thank you very much, Vin. Um, so Heather, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page there. So Heather, um, we have, we have that uh, that decision, that uh opinion by uh the town attorney. So um, with that, I guess, if it goes to the art, then we really don't have to take it up unless, uh, as Vin said, we want to. Uh, have the BET, our our finance board weigh in on it with comments and this board away, weigh in with on with comments before it goes to the RTM.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, thanks, Heather. Really.
Thank you, and we just would need to get a signature on this form, so I'm not sure who would sign off on that, Ben.
That'll likely be, that'll likely be in the resolution authorizing perhaps the first selectmen to to sign off on it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, everybody. Appreciate it.
We have a hand raised. Karen Fesliotis would like to speak.
Hey, Karen.
Hi, good, good, uh, good afternoon now, I guess it is. Heather, you mentioned uh two of the programs. Um, would you be recommending um as tax collector one versus the other, or have you formed an opinion yet? And um, also, are you gathering um the financial costs that, you know, could impact the town, et cetera?
Uh, good question, Karen. I'm running reports uh during the day today. I tried to do it before the uh meeting, but however, my computer was not cooperating. Um, I'm leaning more towards, after reviewing this several times, uh, I was leaning more towards the low-rate. Uh, program. Uh, I think that opening up to, you know, uh, the deferment where it can go for thirty, ninety days of not getting in any funds. If people decide not to pay and do have funds to pay, um, I kind of lean more towards the low-rate program.
So um, I I assume that you would be working with the uh, the town attorney uh to draft a resolution. Um, that would appear with whatever recommendation you come, come up with. Is that correct?
Um, I haven't thought that far, but that's possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen. Okay, so.
Are you looking for some comment from us? Uh, I know we're not voting on this. It's an RTM decision. But to Vincent Marina, Marina's comment to give guide, to give our input? Or we could do that separately by writing?
Yeah, I think we could, we could do that offline. Yeah, I think we could. We could do that offline and certainly send that to the to the RTM. And also the BET. I know Heather had some some very strong opinions on it also. So I think you know, that would be great for the RTM to have those. So we could certainly circle back offline and then give it give it to them. If Tom Byrne unmutes himself, if he could just weigh in on that. Tom, is that okay with you?
I'm sorry. I could you repeat that, Fred?
Yeah, just basically Jill had asked if we wanted to talk offline or give some comments now. So I said, we'll probably we do it offline. Is it okay if the BET and Heather, who had some strong opinions on this? And the Board of Selectmen, just send you some comments and and then it's it's all all yours.
Well, our our committees are going to meet on Monday night. This this will be referred to Budget Overview. I'm not sure when when Budget Overview is meeting. Finance will meet and Legislative and Rules will meet on Monday night. So you're you're certainly free to to send in advance of that. You're you're free to join those meetings. They are noticed and participate because we we definitely are interested in Heather's comments and and the Board of Selectmen's comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have some other hand raises. Lucia Jansen will recognize Lucia.
Hi, I just wanted to mention that the Board, the Budget Overview Committee is meeting Tuesday, the 14th at 7:00 PM over Zoom, and I can send you details. Thank you.
At 7:00 PM?
At 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Lucia.
And that's it. The person who raised her hand lowered it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very good. So we go on to the next item. Another request for MI status for Cardinal Stadium. And is Russell Davidson there?
Yeah, Russ is here. We just have to promote him. And Jenny, this is the screen share.
There he is. He was there. Okay. Russell, are you on?
He's muted. He's he's coming on now.
Okay.
Russ, we can hear you if you'd like to speak.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes. And did you want to show your video at all?
We not video, but the the screen share that's up is good.
Okay.
I hope everybody can see that. So my name is Russ Davidson. I'm the President of K GND Architects. We're here on behalf of the Board of Education. And I believe a number of them administrators and board members are listening and they may want to chime in at some point by raising their hands. So I believe Board of Ed President Peter Bernstein was going to listen in as he could. Trustee Joe Kelly, who's the liaison from the Board for this project. And Dr. Tony Jones, the Superintendent, Sean O'Keefe, the Chief Operating Office Officer, and Dan Watson, the Director of Facilities. I don't know how much everyone knows about this project. I know you've probably heard of it. So I was just going to go through this quickly to talk about both parts and the Board of Ed's plan for moving forward. Now, we are in front of you today for the first hearing of an MI for Phase One of the project. The concept plan that you see in front of you describes both parts of the project. So this is a good overview graphic. Basically, everything to the left of the blue line would be in Phase One. And everything to the right and lower page would be in Phase Two. The Board is really in support of getting the entire project done. And the reason it's being broken into two is to move it along quickly. This has been under discussion since 2017. And as many of you know, in the interim period, the bleachers have had a structural failure that requires them to be shored up at this point in order to be used. So the only reason this is broken in two is to expedite the replacement of the home site bleachers. And it made sense when you're doing that to do all the work on that side of the site as part of that first package. The second package involves some more lengthy. I'm sorry, if you go back one slide, back to the concept slide still, the first slide. Thank you. The second part involves some more controversial elements and some things that require a lengthier approvals process, including work within the wetlands area, some traffic issues that need to be studied related to a connecting driveway, as well as relocation of tennis courts into wetlands buffer areas. So there's just more work to be done on Phase Two. And and we didn't, the Board didn't want to really hold up the Phase One work. But they are authorizing us to start with the Phase Two work. So we will be back in front of you shortly with an MI for Phase Two. If we could just go to the next slide, please. So we've created a full set of documents for Phase One. We have a complete project team, including the Civil Engineer Fussin O'Neill, who is very familiar with your wetlands requirements, is also working on the traffic issues. Landscape Architect Wes Stout from New Canaan and Mechanical Engineer helping with the lighting and utilities for all the buildings. But we have a very complete set of documents which clogged Barbara's inbox. So we apologize for that. The next of the next slide really shows you the civil engineering work for Phase One, which does stand alone. So the creation of the handicap parking, which is in the lower left, would be completed in Phase One. So you would immediately, thank you. So you would immediately, once the new bleachers, which are fully accessible with toilet rooms below them, you would have the handicap parking you need for the full stadium. The Board of Ed has decided to gate that parking lot. So that would only be used during events at the stadium until Phase Two is complete. So this would not impact the daily life of the high school or become an attractive nuisance. Because it's a little bit difficult to observe. So it's a a couple of things came up at our planning and zoning concept review, which was a couple of nights ago via Zoom. And it's sort of changed some things that are going to happen in Phase One. We are actually going to look at modifications to the Putnam East Putnam Avenue curb cut in Phase One. So that this proposal did not propose on changing that curb cut yet. But it seems clear that Planning and Zoning would like whatever is going to eventually take place at that curb cut should be done now. So they have an assurance that Connecticut DOT is on board with it and that it would adequately provide the right sort of right turn in and right turnout configuration that ultimately will be needed. So you'll be seeing that change as these documents develop. And just briefly, a couple of things on what the project looks like. If you could go to the second packet of drawings. This drawing shows on the bottom, the buildings below the bleachers, which were added in due to some public comment. This was one of the original concepts. But this allows the buildings to be a little smaller. You get public toilet rooms, the home team room, referees area, a small concession area, first aid and storage there, as well as a full service elevator up to the press box. You see the bleachers on the top of the page with handicap ramps at both sides. A handicapped accessible aisle right in front, which will be right on the edge of the track with cutouts for handicapped spaces. And then also the elevator to the press box, which will be fully accessible and a large size press box with a filming platform on top. It'll be really this sort of state of the art facility that Greenwich has deserved for quite some time. The next page just shows something that's more recent design, which is the ticket entry kiosk, which will be a nice attractive sort of traditional piece with the cardinal red roof. And we'll have a distributing renderings of that shortly. And that'll be at the entrance to the stadium. In the next slide, it shows the elevations of the bleachers, attractive buildings underneath. It'll be branded with the Cardinal on the elevator tower. The elevator tower and the top of the bleachers will require a zoning variance. You can see the the dashed line that's highest up is the is the line in the R 20 district. And the and the press box and the elevator tower exceed that only slightly. But it shouldn't be that big of an issue, given the height of the grade at the property line. This is not an overwhelming or overly tall structure. And I think you can see that on the next slide. If you look at the top left, you'll see the cross section through the bleachers in relation to Putnam Avenue. So even though the press box is a little taller from the property line and Putnam Avenue, it really won't have very much impact. And that slope will not be altered. So there's a lot of mature hardwood trees there that will will remain. And this is just a cross section that shows your elevator tower and how the how the buildings sort of tuck underneath. And the last slide has some photos of your existing conditions on the left. And down the right side of the page, you'll see an earlier renderings of the bleachers and the buildings underneath. And we think it'll be an attractive facility. And it's again, thought out as a part of the whole. But the goal here is to get the discussion started on the MI on Phase One. And we'll be following up with the MI on Phase Two as fast as those documents can be and can be created. So I think I'll stop there and see if anyone from the Board of Ed wants to chime in.
Thank you, Russell, for that. There's Peter Bernstein or anybody on the Board of Ed on this.
If you could kindly raise your hand if you'd like to chime in. So we have Joe Kelly first. Looks like the first one to raise his hand.
Hello, Fred, Lauren and Jill. How you guys doing? Thanks for the great job you guys are doing. The outstanding work with the town right now. In this time of trouble, this issue is no longer as important as it once was, but yet we have to do the town's business and move it forward as we can best do. In my opinion, these two projects are separate in many ways, or should be separate in many ways. The stadium is overdue and just about shovel ready. We're in the process of picking out possibly as minute details as doorknobs for doors and hinges for lockers and things like that. The other project, the road project, we have a lot of work ahead of us. We have just the bridge alone. I know in the conversations we had from the committee the bridge, we talked about a price suggestion of possibly $750,000 for the bridge, as high as $3 million. So we're not really close on a lot of the issues we have to address when it comes to the second phase. We're talking about moving tennis courts from one part of the grounds to the other part of the grounds. We don't know exactly what we're going to do with them, whether we're going to do it, but we certainly are addressing those and talking about them. But the important issue is separating the two to get this overdue stadium or overdue home bleachers done. As as Russell kindly pointed out, at one point, these had to be condemned, as you guys know. It's it's a little embarrassing to the as a coach in the high school for a number of years. The state of our our stadium is certainly not as others are. So to get this done quickly is quite important. And if we single make this a single MI, the home bleachers, then we could possibly, if timing's correct and things get done right, we could actually get an order in for the for the bleachers themselves and possibly have the new bleachers in place by mid-September. If we can get if we if things work out just right. That means this is basically, as I mentioned, a shovel ready project. And the other one is going to take some time. There's a lot of opinions that have to be heard. And we really can't hold up the stadium project because of some controversy that might exist or some discussions that still have to be had when it comes to the road building. So I think it's important that we separate them. But please understand, my intentions, and I can only speak for myself, will be to work incredibly diligent on the stadium project as well as the road project. We're not going to take the eye off that road project, or I am not anyway, just because we're getting the stadium project done. So don't think I don't want any of the neighbors that are supporting this this road project to think that we're stopping our importance or the importance becomes less because we get the stadium done. I just wanted to get those those points across. Thank you.
I see Peter Bernstein raised his hand. I do have a question, Joe, but I can wait till after Peter has spoken.
All right. Thank you. Lauren, can you hear me?
Yes, Peter, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much for taking this up. This has been a very long road, a lot longer than it should have, frankly. But we're here now, you know, to echo what Joe was saying. We are looking at this as a larger overall project, but there is an immediate need, and the immediate need relates to the bleachers. Quite frankly, we're paying several thousand dollars a month to rent bleachers that, you know, for one reason or another, right now, we're not able to use. But with the goal in mind of trying to get those bleachers replaced at the earliest possible date, which we hope that we'd have them in place for September, if we can move forward with everything and get the requisite approvals, while still talking about the larger issues in in relation to the road and everything else. We really don't want to delay this project any further. It's something that is required, quite frankly, given the condemnation of the bleachers. They're 50 years old. I've said this before. They the bleachers and I are the same age. We need some repair. And finally, they need replacement. So the time is right to move this forward. Really, a lot of people have spent an awful lot of time talking about this. We've had committees working on this for quite some time. We've had our friends at the Greenwich Athletic Foundation helping move us forward. And they've come forward with, you know, with the pledge to commit at least a million dollars to this project. So we really want to get this going. We do not want to delay. This is something that every student graduates from Greenwich High School at Cardinal Stadium. So it's something the entire community benefits from, and we want to we want to move this forward with your help.
So my my question, Joe and Peter, you mentioned the dialogue with the neighbors as it relates to Phase Two, which is the road work. What has the dialogue been with the neighbors, at least for Phase One? And Fred, I'm sure you'll recognize any neighbors that might be on the call that want us to.
So let me let me try to summarize that for you. So for Phase One, I I don't think we've heard major objections from the neighbors on Hillside or or across the way within Millbrook. Really, the discussions with them have been solely focused on the road. The neighbors on Hillside, obviously, have been active in a traffic study and a a traffic committee that the former First Selectmen put together. The neighbors at Millbank have expressed concern about having the the turnout onto the post road so close to where the the entrance to overlook is. Whether you'd have cars making illegal U-turns or trying to use that that entrance. Those are things that obviously will take more time to develop. You know, Russ can talk to the to the fact that we've got a traffic study that had already been completed as part of that work of the former First Selectmen's Committee, as well as MISA. And, you know, there are things that we can do to mitigate the flow of traffic, as well as we need to work with the Connecticut Department of Transportation because of the post road right there. It's a state road. And so they're going to have to give their input, as well as working locally with with DPW. And Russ, I don't know if you want to add anything about the traffic.
Russ, you're on mute. Did you want to add anything?
I did. I did. There's been two traffic studies done, actually. One is the Hillside Avenue Traffic Study, which is a follow up to the MISA project. And earlier, the the district commissioned Fussin O'Neill, who happens to also be our civil engineer, to do a traffic study based on this entry exit point. And while that is in draft form, thankfully, all the traffic counts and observations are 100% complete. So probably within a week or two, we will have a traffic study on the impact of this entry exit point, short term for Phase One and long term for Phase Two.
Jill and Fred are on mute. Can I ask another question? Or I defer to either of you? The handicap parking is still pretty far away from the actual stadium. What improvement? The handicap parking is still pretty far away from the actual stadium. What improvement?
Difficulty, you know, crossing an active drive would be quite treacherous. So due to safety purposes, it really made sense to really move it to where they had thought that would be a good option. And really, it is equidistant, too, for those from the home side as well as the visitor's side. So that is also another point I just wanted to make, adding on to Russ's statements and comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. Couple of questions, Russ and Peter and Joe. One is, I know we're still paying to rent those bleachers. I know they're still, they're usable, but the fields, no one's on those fields right now. And they may not be for several months. Couldn't the town get those payments suspended? Because we're just spending money for no reason right there.
So Fred, thank you. It's Peter Bernstein. I think the deal is if we suspend the payments, they take the shoring away and that removes any ability to use the bleachers at all. So just being extra hopeful and optimistic, we would really love to be able to have graduation for the seniors this year. We could do the graduation without the bleachers, but then the question becomes, what do you do going into the fall? Do you have to then reshore the bleachers if we don't get requisite approvals and our order in time to get bleachers manufactured and then installed? So it is a concern. It's something we've talked about. You know, the savings, look, we'd love to have savings, but I also don't want to shortchange the students that are at the school and the community that uses the facility.
Thank you very much, Peter, and I appreciate that and certainly understand the sentiment. But we just don't know if they're going to be allowing, you know, right now, they can't be in groups of over five in the state. So, I mean, that's not that far off. So my concern is only, you know, just spending that money there for no reason at all. But I certainly appreciate your comments on that. And a few observations, look, I remember when that field opened up. And for about 10 or 15 years, it was fine, but it quickly became outdated. And then it became, to me, an embarrassment. I've played on almost all the fields in, at least Fairfield County and a lot throughout the state. And I coached on a lot of them, and I've umpired on a lot of them. And we have a fellow umpire on this call, too. It's certainly, it's long overdue. But I do want to mention that regarding the road. And Joe, I'm with you. And I know, having known you since 1998, I know you mean what you say, and I do, too. And the residents on Hillside Road were promised some things when MISA went up there. And I guess it never came to fruition. And now they're really looking at a nightmarish situation every single day there with that traffic. And the one lane, to me, has made it even worse. I've been stuck in that. So not only for those people on Hillside Road, but for the town, because we all get caught up in that at that time. Is there, I know Russell said that we'll go to the second MI fairly soon. Could we have some type of rough estimate? We wouldn't hold you exactly to it. We know things change. But they've been patiently waiting there. And it does make sense to have that second road there, you know, right turn in, right turn out. It would relieve a lot of pressure. And I believe that's the only school of that size in the county, I think, that doesn't have a second road in Gresikras. So Russ can, or Peter, can someone at least give us a rough idea what we're talking about when you say the second MI would come fairly quickly after the first one?
Russ, why don't you take that one?
We're talking with our consultant team. We believe we can be in front of you with a complete package for Phase 2 in June.
Thank you. Okay. And then, rough idea as far as, as much as you can guess at that. Getting this done, which is very, very important, it's long overdue, as we've heard and as we know. Are we talking roughly how many years before we'd even get to that other part? Second?
We would hope that if we start the approvals process in June, that that can be finished in nine months and we can start some portion of the construction in summer '21.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. So we know we have a rough idea. We're certainly not holding it exactly to that because things do change and.
Yeah, and there's a lot of approvals. There's wetlands, zoning, Connecticut DOT. A lot of hurdles there.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate your answers. Any other questions? Okay, no hands raised? Okay, so we'll be back at this. I guess this is our first read at this. Thank you, Peter, Joe and Russell for coming on. Okay, thank you. So the, before we get to our appointments, which is the last thing on the agenda, we have the last item of new business is implementation of tipping fees. And our town administrator, Ben Brannion, is Ben on?
Yes.
I hear him. You want to get the, put the volume up, I think?
Ben, if you could announce yourself.
I'm announcing now.
Okay, thank you.
So the item before you, just make sure you have, continue to have my mic checked.
Can everybody hear Ben? Lauren, Jill, can you hear Ben?
It's faint. If he's.
I mean, I can boost up the volume on my end, but.
Ben, you can also put the meeting on mute and call in with your phone if you have to dial in.
No, I'll do that. It's been.
No, it sounds better.
Now it's good.
Better? Okay. So the item before you is the first read of a change to Chapter 9, Section 9.5. It's a first read only. And I also recommend, just to remind you, you're not approving any of the rates. You may see some rates that were referenced in the memo from the First Selectmen dated March 13th in the meeting packet. So today is only a first read. You still have a second read. And only if and when the RTM approves this ordinance would you then have the rate discussion. But the rates were only for conversation that the BET was having between Page 2 and Tipping Fees. But tipping fee is the only thing in front of you? And the only thing in front of you is a change to Section 9.5? And I believe our Assistant Town Attorney, Amanat Vod, and our DPW Commissioner, Amy Seaver, are both on the line as well. This ordinance has been reviewed, researched by the Town Attorney's Office and reviewed by myself and the Commissioner of Public Works. And we're certainly answering any questions you may have. Our intent was to have minimal change to the ordinance and to deal with tipping fees in the two paragraphs. One is for the tipping fee for haulers and one is for the permit fee for resident drop-off.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Are there any questions for Ben?
And one of my questions, I understand this is Jill. It's one, so we're just looking at the modification to the statute. So the way I, the way I'm reading the statute, which I'm not sure is correct, is that all waste generated in town must go to Holly Hill. Is that correct? If you look at Section 9.5, not the new language, but your existing language, all acceptable solid waste shall be transported to the town disposal area. So does that then prohibit anyone in town from having their waste that's generated in Greenwich moved someplace else?
We don't believe it does prohibit that, that that language, as you correctly pointed out, is existing language in the ordinance. My understanding, and if Amy or Aman is on the line, in the past, that language was historical language when municipal used to have requirements of tonnage at certain resource recovery authorities. But we don't believe the language as it is there would prohibit anybody from transferring outside of the town. It's more about a disposal area within the town.
I'm not sure that I understand the language.
Amy's trying to speak. Go ahead, Amy.
I can concur with what Ben said. That language is from the days when you had to provide a, you had a put-or-pay type thing in your contract. And we also talked about how we were trying to be clear that it's supposed to go to Holly Hill, not some other location, at least within town, and not on the side of the road. But we didn't, we didn't, we weren't fooling with that language right now in this read.
That is, this is Fred. Amy's correct. And also, I could tell you, for years, there have been other transfer stations that had a tipping fee that was a little bit less, whether it was for bulky waste or construction material. And the haulers would go wherever, you know, they would take stuff that was generated in Greenwich and take it to other facilities outside our town's borders. So I think it is confusing, Jill, when you read that. But Amy's correct for the reason why it was in there in the first place.
Yeah, I thank, I thank both of you for the legislative history, as it were. I will, just before this comes back to us, I think the Law Department should clarify what that means because it seems to say that all solid waste shall be transported, not I mean, nah, I'd like a clarification on that language because I think it's a little unclear. And I guess the questions, we have some questions on the statute. Under Section 9.6, do we have any reciprocal municipal cooperative aid agreements for acceptance?
I'll let, Amy, can you confirm?
I'm sorry, but the question did not come through clearly. Jill's question said, do we have any? And then it got cut up.
Okay, sorry, Amy, Commissioner Seaver. Section 9.6 talks about acceptance of solid waste, bulky waste, hazardous waste from places outside of the town limits. And it says it's only permitted if approved in writing by the commissioner as part of a reciprocal municipal cooperative aid agreement. And I was wondering whether we have any.
We do not, we do not have one at this time, but it is good to have in there in case you needed it.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I would agree with Jill. I mean, it's kind of, that's a little bit data we should really get. We'll have the town attorney weigh in on that and just clarify that language a little bit so it's not as confusing. I know what it means and I know what we've been doing for decades. But it's, when you look at it, you kind of get a different, a different, you know, opinion of. So we'll circle back.
We have, unless we have any more questions, we do have somebody in the audience that would like to speak, John Mistracchio. So John, if you could announce yourself.
Here we go. This is John. Can you hear me?
We hear you, John.
Thank you.
Yeah. You can't hear me?
We can, John.
I just wanted to chime in and say that at the committee level, we struggle with the use of the word shall, may and will. So I think Jill's point is well-taken. We certainly don't mean to limit something. So maybe coming back with clarification as to what we're trying to say with that sentence makes a lot of sense. And by the way, I accidentally raised my hand. I wasn't going to say that out loud.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, John. And I will circle back with the town attorney on that to get some clarification. With that, seeing no more questions, we can go on to the last item of today's agenda. There is no executive session. It's been canceled. So it's just appointments and nominations. I believe, Lauren, we have two?
Yes. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Frank Barata to the Position of Alternate on the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals for a four-year term ending on October 31st, 2023.
I second that motion.
Discussion? Well, we heard from Frank the other day. He is certainly well-qualified. He's got a lot of civic spirit and he's been a participating member as an alternate. And we look forward to one day him, his being on there as a full-voting member. So I will call for a vote now, and Fred Camillo votes, yay.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, so it's three to nothing. Congratulations, Frank, if you're out there listening. And Lauren, we have a second one?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Winston Robinson to the Board of Human Services for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2022.
Second, sorry.
Okay, discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll just mention that Winston is a long, long-time volunteer, having served on the Board of Parks and Recreation for many years and now on the Board of Human Services. And he's just a great asset to our town. And we're happy that he's re-upping for another term on the Board of Human Services. So with that, I'll call for a vote. Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Another three to nothing score. Perfect. All right, congratulations to both Frank and to Winston. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second that motion.
Okay, all's a favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you so much, everybody. Be safe out there.
Thank you.